WDEV News presents. The regular monthly meeting of the Fintress County Commission. The Fintress County Commission meets the third Monday of each month and you can see it live on Channel 12 Cable TV. It's a presentation of the Union Bank of Jamestown and Clark Range, your reliable banking partner since 1904. For more than a century, Union Bank has been serving the people of Fintress County. Now, as we begin a new chapter in our history of service, we want to take this opportunity to reassure you that while our building may be new, we're still the same friendly people you have known for years. Union Bank, the same people, the same goals, and the same commitment to you. Union Bank, your locally owned hometown bank for more than a century, growing to meet your needs. Equal Housing Leader Member FDIC.
We'll now call this meeting to order. Will you all please rise for the presentation of the colors by the York Institute Color Guard, followed by the pledge to the flag by Larry Cooper, 5th District Commissioner, and then opening prayer by Wade Matthews, 5th District Commissioner.
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic over which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Make your his, please. Most kindly gracious heavenly Father, Lord, we come before you in prayer tonight, Lord. We ask you for wisdom, Lord, to make decisions for our county, Lord. Just help us, Lord, to be good stewards with the money, Lord, and just be an example to everybody in the county, Lord. Thank you, Lord, for everybody that come tonight, Lord, to the meeting. Lord, that are interested and want to see that the county business is done right, Lord. Just help us all to get home safely if the road's slick. Just help this county to be a life to surround the counties, Lord. Jesus, am I praying? Amen.
Court Clerk Marilyn Stevens will call the roll.
Here.
Here.
Rod Williams.
Here.
Kim Davison.
Here.
Benny Hughes.
Here.
Robert Cooper.
Here.
Lester Denny.
Here.
Leon Stair.
Here.
Larry Cooper.
Here.
Wade Matthews.
Here.
All present. First item will be approval of minutes from the December 10th, 2018 County Commission Regular Meeting. Has everybody had a chance to look at them? Do we have, can we have a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Rod Williams to approve.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Mickey McDonald. Any discussion on them? Roll call, please.
Mickey.
Four.
Justin.
Four.
Danny.
Four.
Robert.
Four.
Larry.
Four.
Wade.
Four.
Rod.
Four.
Kim.
Four.
Lester.
Four.
Leon.
Four.
Ten, four, none against. Our next item, number seven, we have two new notary applications and four renewals. The Newmans, Desi Mae Montoni, Kimberly M. Wright, and four renewals, Ralph Asbury, Tammy Denise Delk, Lorenda S. Lee, Thomas H. Potter.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Justin Miller to approve. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Motion been made and seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Contrary, no. Item number eight, consideration of a resolution in support of reallocation of the oil and gas severance tax. Commissioner Gooding, would you like to acknowledge that, please?
I will. This is a resolution in support of reallocating of the oil and gas severance taxes. You want me to just go ahead and read the resolution?
That'll work.
Tennessee's diverse geology and geographic has been blessed with the state with a variety of mineral resources which represent a significant economic contribution to the state of Tennessee through commercial sales and taxes. And whereas Fintress County ranks sixth in the state in natural gas production with 39,420 million cubic feet, I guess that is, MCF, produced in 2017. And whereas two of Tennessee's most productive natural gas wells, the Stearns Number One and Number Five are located within Fintress County. And whereas Fintress County ranks fourth in the state in oil production with 38,125 barrels produced in 2017. Whereas the oil and gas industry pays a severance tax equal to 3% of gross product severed. And whereas this severance tax is currently divided between the state and the county from which the mineral is severed by two-thirds to one-third ratio. And whereas the severance tax division is contrary to the other mineral severance taxes where the county receives the entire amount less administrative fees. And whereas reallocating the state's share of the oil and gas severance taxes would decrease the state's general fund by one thousandth of one percent. And whereas the analysis show that Fintress County's total revenue from oil and gas severance taxes could increase by as much as $28,448. And whereas the authority to reallocate the oil and gas severance taxes of the counties from which the minerals are severed must be passed by the Tennessee General Assembly. Now, therefore be it resolved by the body on this 14th day of January 2019 that the Fintress County Commission supports the introduction and adoption of legislation by the Tennessee General Assembly to reallocate the oil and gas severance tax from the current ratio to one in which the counties would receive the entire amount in order to standardize the severance tax across the mineral extraction industry and to more appropriately fund the counties from which the land and labor to fuel the industry exist.
Everyone, I'm sure read along with that as Commissioner Gooding read that. Do I hear a motion to accept this resolution?
I will make the motion to accept.
Motion made by Commissioner Gooding. Do I hear a second? Second by Commissioner Benny Hughes. Roll call vote, please.
Larry.
Four.
Wade.
Four.
Benny.
Four.
Robert.
Four.
Mickey.
Four.
Four.
Rod.
Four.
Kim.
Four.
Lester.
Four.
Leon.
Four.
Ten, four, none against. Resolution passes. Item number 10, consideration, number nine, I'm sorry, consideration of the 2019 Fintress County Road List as presented by the Fintress County Highway Department. Joey, would you like to acknowledge that just for a minute or just want me, I'll just tell them what we've got here? Is that okay? We've got a total of 765 roads and a total of about 760 miles that the Highway Department has to keep up and keep in shape. Sometimes it, people live on some roads and they think, well, not a whole lot's getting done here, but there's that many, there's 765, and they're doing the best that they can to keep up with the road work. Do I hear a motion to accept this here road list for the year of 2019?
So moved.
Kim Davison made the motion.
I'll second it.
Robert Cooper, second the motion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Contrary, no. Motion passes. Ayes. Item number 10, consideration of the Fintress County Ambulance Service Building Software Proposals. Micah Dunford.
Back in November, we commissioned voted to do away with AMV billing and at that time we decided to start trying to bring billing back in house. We sent out bids that ended a couple of weeks ago and we only actually received the one bid from Zoll Medical Billing Company. That's included in your packet. Now, when they sent that bid in, they sent it for a three-year contract bid for doing the billing, or providing the billing software and a five-year contract. I don't need to read the numbers to you there. It's going right behind the other. First, I think probably your three-year and then they give just a little bit of a reduction to go with the five-year. About $50 a month, something like that reduction to go with a five-year contract versus a three-year contract.
So you just had one bid on this?
Just had one bid.
And by bringing it back in-house, it will save possibly the county from $8,000 to $10,000 a year, possibly?
That'd come to fruition like we anticipated with it.
Which one of these do you recommend?
I recommend the three-year just because if you get stuck in a five-year contract, a lot of times there's some fees that you need to get out of from everything I'm hearing and reading and seeing and the product. I don't foresee any need in terminating that earlier or anything, but you never know three years from now what's going to be on the market. Maybe something better, maybe cheaper, and just that small of a discount over those two years is not worth being locked in for extra two years.
What is the will of the commission?
I make a motion to go with a three-year contract.
Commissioner Wade Matthews made the motion. Second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Justin Miller. Any discussion?
I've got a question. On the, is there a fee within the three years if we decide to opt out? Is there a?
You know, that probably in the contract, it's not stated in this. When there's a contract, when we draw up the contract itself, there will probably be a settlement in there, terminating the contract early.
Would the contract have to come back to us again or would it, before we, before we're tied to this $38,000 contract, it'll be? You accept a unconditional on the terms of the contract.
Yes.
Okay. Well, I'm just curious because we didn't have a copy of the contract.
Yes, this is just, just exactly.
Thank you.
Roll call vote.
Mickey.
Four.
Justin.
Four.
Rod.
Four.
Kim.
Four.
Benny.
Four.
Robert.
Four.
Lester.
Four.
Leon.
Four.
Larry.
Four.
Wade.
Four.
Ten, four, none against to accept the three-year contract of $38,280 from Zoll. Item number 11, consideration of the Second Amendment to the April 1st, 2015 Sales and Service Agreement between Fintress County and Five Points Incorporated. Becky Crockett, would you like to address this?
In November, Tyler and I met at Five Points in regards to our IRS reporting for this year for the county in regards to insurance. They offered us the ability to step into an additional portion of contract, which is total care IRS reporting, which they would code all of our IRS forms for us for all of our, each month for each employee who was eligible for insurance. The additional cost is $672, which is a small amount compared to the liability of penalties we could have if we do code if one's wrong. Those penalties from the IRS could be up to $270 per form if we miscode them. That's eighty-five and DVS being that Tyler and I have never coded before this year.
What's the will of the commission?
I make a motion to accept.
Motion by Lester Gooden to accept. Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Robert Cooper seconds. Any discussion?
This is just to double check what you guys are submitting to them.
So we have, we have generated all the data.
Right.
All the employment information, everything, the offers of coverage, we've generated. We give them the data and then their program will use the data that we generate in order to generate the 1095 CDs and code them the way they need to be coded.
This is for one year. We had them take out the Evergreen Clause. Usually Five Points has an Evergreen Clause where it renews annually. This is for one year. Gives us a year to see if this, what we want to do, if we want to take it on in-house or what we want to do past this year. But this contract is one year. It would have to be renewed in a year.
And based on the package that we currently have with them, they actually thought it was a mistake when they generated the cost because it was so small to add this portion to our contract.
It also says, and if you look at total cost of services is 672, but if you read down below the asterisk charts, it says total cost services does not include ACA print and mail fees.
So that's a, that's a dollar fifty, a?
So that's on top of the 672.
Yes, but my budget currently has the money in it in postal fees in order to, for them to print.
So it's a dollar fifty times a dollar, 185 employee. So it's actually not just 672.
But we don't have to take that. That's just if we choose to go that route. That is just the disclaimer as to the cost that it would be if we chose. And it's not even, if I remember right, Tyler, it's not part of the contract, is it? It's just, that's the fee if we choose to have to do that.
If they print and mail.
If they.
I mean, it's got to be printed, it's got to be mailed, but you know what I'm saying?
We're going to mail them.
If we print, if we handle it in-house, they got to be mailed anyway, so.
Could they not go out with the check stubs with the W2s?
They could.
But you would only have, but they would only send out something if there was a problem, I wanted.
No, at this point, we're talking about them generating our 1095 CDs.
But if there's a problem, they're going to let you know before to correct.
Yes, and they have already, they have already inputted all of my data that I sent to them and it is good. It's been clear. They just need to know if we're going to pay to have them code the 1095 CDs or if we're going to code the 1095 CDs.
It's eliminating the liability off those counties from this year.
One small error, that's going to be a lot of money.
$270 per form.
Anything else? Roll call vote.
Larry.
Four.
Wade.
Four.
Benny.
Four.
Robert.
Four.
Lester.
Four.
Leon.
Four.
Rod.
Four.
Kim.
Four.
Mickey.
Four.
Justin.
Four.
Ten, four, none against.
Motion passes. Ten, four, none against. Number 12, review of the county debt management policy that is on file with the Office of the Comptroller's Office as required by Three Star Program requirements. Tyler, you going to comment on that, please?
In the last paragraph of that debt management policy, it says that the debt management policy is supposed to be reviewed every two years or at the change of an executive. We're required to review that and approve that every year for the Three Star Grant. So it's a good time right now as we are reviewing that and accepting it for the Three Star Grant. Go ahead and review the debt management policy and accept it. There is no changes. It's the same policy we've had since 2011.
Motion to accept.
Motion by Benny Hughes to accept.
Second.
Second by Mickey McDonald. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Contrary, no. Ayes have it. Consideration of approval of the Three Star Fiscal Strength and Efficient Government Fiscal Confirmation Letter. Leanne Smith, welcome back.
Thank you. So as we were just talking about the Three Star Program, the Chamber of Commerce, which I'm the executive director of, we facilitate the county's Three Star Program. And that program focuses on five different tiers of jobs and economic development, fiscal strength and efficient government, public safety, education and workforce development, and health and welfare. Most of this program are things that our community is already doing. It's just us to compile all of it together, get that to the state and us get the certification. As a part of that certification, they did require us to have this fiscal strength and efficient government confirmation letter to them. And of course, you all just reviewed the debt management policy, which is part of that and which is of course required. And it also acknowledges that there's an annual cash flow forecast prepared and submitted to the comptroller and that all offices, all county offices are required to have a documented system of internal controls. You all have that letter and I'm here receiving approval of it so I can submit it on.
Regular motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Gooding to approve. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Rod Williams. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Contrary, no. Ayes have it. Thank you, Leanne. Consideration of the appointments and reappointments to the Joint Economic Commission Development Board. We have four new appointees and we have four reappointments. Our reappointments, Leanne Smith, Misty Stevens, Lynn Delk, Steve Bootell. Do I hear a motion on those?
So moved.
Commissioner Kim Davison made the motion. Second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Gooding. Any discussion on those? All in favor of the reappointments, please say aye.
Aye.
Contrary, no. Ayes have it. Anything you'd like to say on the new appointments, Ms. Leanne?
No, we have the following new appointments though. Of course, we have categories that fulfill those roles on that board and that way we get a broad spectrum of people on it. And this is a requirement through the Three Star Program. So if you want to read those.
I will. Our new appointments are as follows. Michael Hodges to fill a tourism seat, term to expire 12/31/22. Sheriff Michael Reagan to fill the public safety seat, term to expire 12/31/22. Allen City Mayor Pat Clark, term to expire 12/31/22. Jamestown City Mayor Linda Baines, term to expire 12/31/20. What's the will of the commission?
Move to approve.
Justin Miller makes the motion to approve. Second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Mickey McDonald. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Contrary, no. Ayes have it. Getting into item number 15, and we have a few here. Consideration of the following budget amendments. The first one is the Circuit Court Clerk in the amount of $1,071.21 to pay out the copier lease. I don't believe Gina's here. So what's the motion? I mean, what's the will of the commission?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Kim Davison to approve. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Benny Hughes. Any discussion on it? Roll call vote.
Larry.
Four.
Wade.
Four.
Benny.
Four.
Robert.
Four.
Lester.
Four.
Leon.
Four.
Mickey.
Four.
Justin.
Four.
Rod.
Four.
Kim.
Four.
Ten, four, none against.
Ten, four, none against. The next one is the Senior Citizen Monthly Amendment for Fundraising Money Received in the amount of $1,388.50. Alice couldn't be with us tonight, so that there is just her normal fundraising money that comes in each month.
Make a motion to approve.
Commissioner Gooding makes the motion to approve.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Miller. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mickey.
Four.
Justin.
Four.
Rod.
Four.
Kim.
Four.
Benny.
Four.
Robert.
Four.
Lester.
Four.
Leon.
Four.
Larry.
Four.
Wade.
Four.
Ten, four, none against.
Ten, four, none against. Amendment passes. The next one is the Jail Amendment in the amount of $5,800 to cover overage in building maintenance and office supplies. Sheriff Reagan.
All I need to do is just move some money around. I'm not asking the commission for any money. I'm just, I've got some line items that's over. I've got the money in my budget. I just think the move is right.
What's the will of the commission?
I'll make the motion to approve.
Make a mo, a motion made by Commissioner Gooding, seconded by Commissioner Cooper. Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Mickey.
Four.
Justin.
Four.
Four.
Robert.
Four.
Rod.
Four.
Kim.
Four.
Larry.
Four.
Wade.
Four.
Motion passes. Ten, four, none against. The next amendment, Sheriff's Department Amendment in the amount of $9,075.60 for insurance money received from a wreck patrol car.
One of the Navy wrecked, towed, explored here in Union Bank. Insurance paid $9,075.60. I think it cost about $9,800 to fix it. I went ahead and had it fixed because you can't buy one for $18,000 or $2,000. So we just went ahead and fixed the car.
What's the will of the commission?
Make the motion to approve.
Commissioner Gooding made the motion to approve.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Miller. Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Benny.
Four.
Robert.
Four.
Mickey.
Four.
Justin.
Four.
Rod.
Four.
Kim.
Four.
Lester.
Four.
Leon.
Four.
Larry.
Four.
Wade.
Four.
Ten, four, none against.
Ten, four, none against. Thank you for saving $10,000 there, Sheriff. The next one is the Sheriff's Department in the amount of $6,975 to cover overages in in-service training, maintenance of office equipment, office supplies, uniforms, and other charges. You see in front of you there where it's being moved from?
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Benny Hughes.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Kim Davison. Any discussion? Roll call, please, Marilyn.
Mickey.
Four.
Justin.
Four.
Rod.
Four.
Kim.
Four.
Benny.
Four.
Robert.
Four.
Lester.
Four.
Leon.
Four.
Larry.
Four.
Wade.
Four.
Ten, four, none against.
Ten, four, none against. The next one is the Sheriff's Department in the amount of $3,432.69. This is for money received from the sale of surplus patrol cars, parts, and equipment that was sold on Gov.Dills.
We had some patrol cars that bought through the county. We sold them and it has to go back to 101, but money does. We sold them on Gov.Dills and we got some old stuff up there we got that had to go into, has to go into 101 too. That's what it brought on Gov.Dills. It's 34, 32, 60.
That's what it brought on Gov.Dills, it's thirty-four, thirty-two, sixty-nine.
What's the will of the commission?
I'll make the motion to approve.
Motion made by Commissioner Robert Cooper to approve, second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Mickey McDonald. Any discussion? Roll call vote?
Mickey.
Four.
Justin.
Four.
Rod.
Four.
Kim.
Four.
Benny.
Four.
Robert.
Four.
Lester.
Four.
Leon.
Four.
Larry.
Four.
Wade.
Four.
The next item on for the Sheriff's Department, drug fund in the amount of eighty-seven thousand, six hundred and sixty-two dollars from the sale of equipment and vehicles that were drug seizures in order to the department.
And also from the Lee's Health Room, we sold some stuff, too.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Lester Gooding to approve.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Justin Miller. Any discussion? Roll call vote?
Larry.
Four.
Four.
Benny.
Four.
Robert.
Four.
Lester.
Four.
Leon.
Four.
Mickey.
Four.
Justin.
Four.
Rod.
Four.
Kim.
Four.
Ten-four, none against.
Motion passes ten-four, none against. Thank you, Sheriff. Michael, you know about how many ricks of wood y'all have cut and placed out so far yet?
We delivered, uh, we had ninety-six we delivered last week, I'm not kidding, this week's out.
So, your sum is right now around a hundred rick of wood delivered to senior citizens' folks in their need. Alrighty, thanks.
Yeah, good deal.
The next item on the agenda is a silver defense in the amount of fourteen hundred dollars. This was from donations received at the Outlet Pumpkin Festival for the last couple of years. This will go into third budget. What is the will of the commission?
Make a motion to approve.
Commissioner Lester Gooding made the motion to approve. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Rod Williams. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mickey.
Four.
Justin.
Four.
Rod.
Four.
Kim.
Four.
Benny.
Four.
Robert.
Four.
Lester.
Four.
Leon.
Four.
Larry.
Four.
Wade.
Four.
Ten-four, none against.
The next one is from the County Highway Department. Mr. Joey Reagan.
Do we need to transfer money out of one line item to another?
It'll be decreasing the Capitol Atlay Bridge construction from thirty-five thousand dollars and increasing the Capitol Atlay building improvement and surplus equipment line. Is that correct, Joey? What's the will of the commission?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Kim Davison to approve.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Mickey McDonald. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Benny.
Four.
Robert.
Four.
Lester.
Four.
Leon.
Four.
Larry.
Four.
Wade.
Four.
Mickey.
Four.
Justin.
Four.
Rod.
Four.
Kim.
Four.
Ten-four, none against.
Thank you, Joey. Motion passes. The next one is finance and personnel. Tyler, would you like to go over that?
This budget amendment is, uh, we combined our communication line for our telephone bills upstairs. We, we combined the telephone and the internet for upstairs. Saves us roughly sixty dollars a month, and basically, that's bringing in the HR personnel office, and we're all on the same phone bill now, sharing an internet package, so we, we cut out one internet package, basically.
What's the will of the commission?
Make a motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Lester Gooding to approve, second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Robert Cooper. Any discussion? Roll call vote?
Mickey.
Four.
Justin.
Four.
Rod.
Four.
Kim.
Four.
Benny.
Four.
Robert.
Four.
Lester.
Four.
Leon.
Four.
Larry.
Four.
Wade.
Four.
Ten-four, none against.
Ten-four, none against. Amendment passes. Finance in the amount of four hundred dollars, dollar.
Uh, this is just a line item transfer to cover, uh, our printing station area forms that is over. We got some cards and some letterhead there. We ended up over just a little bit on it with our move, too.
What is the will of the commission?
Most approve.
Motion by Commissioner Benny Hughes to approve, second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Rod Williams. Any discussion? Roll call vote?
Benny.
Four.
Robert.
Four.
Lester.
Four.
Leon.
Four.
Larry.
Four.
Wade.
Four.
Mickey.
Four.
Justin.
Four.
Rod.
Four.
Kim.
Four.
Ten-four, none against.
Motion passes ten-four, none against. One more for the finance in the amount of three thousand, four hundred, ninety-two dollars and sixteen cents.
This budget amendment is to pay a company called Spyglass. They done telecommunications audit for us. They saved us a little over thirty-five hundred dollars a year. This is their fee, the first-year savings. This isn't just the finance office. This, that, the Spyglass audited everything in the county, all the telecommunications. This is the savings they got across the board throughout the county, and that's taxes we were being charged that we were reimbursed. There's a line that should've been shut down five years ago that, I mean, once they find it, that, that's a savings on their part, but now we, this is, I think they'd done it once seven or eight years ago, and they saved, they saved a lot more than this seven or eight years ago, but of course, you know, a follow-up you're not gonna have as close a chunk, but this is just their cost for their, their fee. It'll just be this year, and then next year, we will reflect the savings back into the county.
And the following years, hopefully. What's the will of the commission?
Make a motion to approve.
Commissioner Gooding made the motion to approve. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second made by Commissioner Miller. Any discussion on this? Roll call vote, please.
Mickey.
Four.
Justin.
Four.
Rod.
Four.
Kim.
Four.
Larry.
Four.
Wade.
Four.
Benny.
Four.
Robert.
Four.
Lester.
Four.
Leon.
Four.
Ten-four, none against.
The last one is county miscellaneous in the amount of thirteen thousand, four hundred, forty-two dollars, ninety-six cents. This is to pay off Walmart's statement and shut down the account. Charges have been disputed, so there is a potential that we will not have to pay this full amount. Anything else to that, Tyler?
It's been brought to our attention that we had been carrying a balance on our Walmart cards that we should not have been carrying. In some cases, it's caused some people that's went up there to use it not be able to, so what we suggested that we do is pay that off in full, shut those cards down, and regroup and see what's going on. I move that we approve this budget amendment.
Commissioner Larry Cooper makes the motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Kim Davison. Any discussion? If not, roll call vote?
Larry.
Four.
Wade.
Four.
Benny.
Four.
Robert.
Four.
Mickey.
Four.
Justin.
Four.
Rod.
Four.
Kim.
Four.
Lester.
Four.
Leon.
Four.
Ten-four, none against.
Ten-four, none against. Amendment passes. And any other business?